Good evening. We'd like to call the Benita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District Monthly Board Meeting for Monday, July 13, 2020, to order. Please rise.
We'd like to have a moment of silence and prayer for four firefighters that have lost their lives this month in the line of duty. Dear God, we come to you and we give honor to those that have made the ultimate sacrifices that they've served to help and save the lives of others. We pray that you'll be with their families, Lord, during this time of loss, that you'll watch over them. And, Lord, we pray for protection of our firefighters as they serve the community here, keep them from harm of any physical as well as the virus. We just pray that you will watch over them and their families. And be with all the leaders in our city, in our nation, in our state, as they make decisions that impact the lives of others. Just give us wisdom and guidance in all things. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Seeing no public, I'm gathering we have no public comment on agenda items. So we need a motion for the approval of the June 8, 2020 regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion for the July 2, 2020 budget workshop minutes.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion for the June 2, 2020 incurred ACH payments, the acknowledgement of financial report, acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, business. Start with Commissioner Murphy.
I was wondering if we have any reports on the current status of new cases of the COVID in our area.
I'll be...
Is that by your report?
Part of my report, sir.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Casilla?
I have nothing.
I'm good.
Mr. Slighting?
I have one quick thing, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to see if the board would agree with this and put it on the agenda and vote on it. But I'd like to recognize Captain Lee of the, and the men and women of the Benita Springs substation and with the leadership office. He's always been agreeable to anything we need here. I don't want to politicize it and put, they could use a pat on the back now. They're good friends of ours, they always have been, and it will, it will help foster...
Did you have something that you wanted to do directly, or...
Yes, sir. I spoke with the chief. The chief had a real good idea. Present them with a plaque on 9/11. We'll call them in here and just say, hey, we appreciate your support. Anytime we need them for anything, you can get them on the phone.
No question.
Call Captain Lee and say, hey, we need five guys. Where do you need them?
No, there's no doubt about that. We're very blessed to have the leadership we do.
I was thinking...
Has to go on next month's agenda.
Yeah, and that's what I wanted to bring it up today.
Sure.
You could actually vote on it, and then the chief had excellent idea of 9/11, it would be a great time to do that.
So we are going to have the 9/11 service?
That's our plan right now. Depending on how this, how COVID-19 goes, again, when we normally have it, we have it outside. Last year, we moved it to our Station 1, where the garden is and where the reflection area, obviously named after Chief Daigle and Chairman Lohan. So, yeah, we have had it there last year. Our plan is to have it this year. Again, it's going to be outside, so obviously we'll take COVID-19 into, into play to see what's happening. But as of right now, I still say we're going to go through with it.
Do we have a consensus among commissioners to put that on the agenda?
Absolutely. I'm 100% behind you.
Yeah, I think we all are. It's a no-brainer. So if we could put that on next month's agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, thank you. It's a great idea.
Who is that non-messed man? I don't recognize him. Who are you?
And I have nothing this evening, other than, you know, the crazy world we're living in, and everybody's doing the best to deal with it and just keep up the good work. Anybody have any old business?
On the new business, I'd like to mention that one of our former chairmen and one of our commissioners, Frank Lyles, is in real serious trouble right now. So some prayers for him, please.
Yep. Yeah, he was around here for a long time. Any old business? Anybody have anything they want to bring up under old business?
The only thing I have for the commission is, under old business, is the AV equipment.
Correct.
The RFP did go out last week, and we are soliciting bids right now, so we should have something by the end of this month. So I'll bring it back to you in August.
Perfect. Okay, on the new business, the first item is we need to set the tentative mileage rate, the not-to-exceed rate.
I'll make a motion not to exceed 226.
The current rate, no?
The current rate, not to exceed that.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We need a motion for the disposal of assets form. So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item we probably need to talk about a little bit, the Fire Department mobile app.
Yes, sir. So what this is, this is a kind of a brainchild that me and Nicole Hornberger had come up with. We'd seen one out and about. It really started about, I'm going to say about two months ago, when we had all that rain, the four inches of rain over the weekend. We kept getting phone calls and phone calls and phone calls about, do you have sand? Do you have sandbags? Where can we get sand at? You know, this is flooding. Even though it was a dry season, we still got the phone calls. So me and Nicole started thinking about it, and we kept putting things on our Facebook, on our Facebook. We'd put something on our website. So we'd seen this Fire Department app, and North, or not North, Citi of Naples had gotten it recently. So we talked to them a little bit. Nicole and I had a couple of meetings with the actual company, and I think it provides our citizens and visitors the opportunity where we can push something out. Like, over the weekend, we had a controlled burn east of town in the Crew Sanctuary. Right now, we'll put those things on our website, but unless you're actually going to look for it, you're not, you don't know where to go. It's not getting pushed to your phone. All of us now have cell phones, all of us now have smartphones, where things get automatically pushed out, whether it's an Amber Alert, whether it's some type of breaking news, whatever. We just want to be in the forefront with that also. So now, hopefully, we never have to use it for a hurricane, but if we need to use it for a hurricane for sandbags, we can let the public know who has these, this app. Hey, sandbags available at Station 4. Sandbags are available here. We're out of sand. Monitor this. We could even use it as far as a major incident, whether it's a chemical spill at BSU or something like that, or a major accident on the interstate. Please avoid I-75. We've got a two-car accident. So that's how it came to be. We have the money because of COVID-19. I'd like to transfer money from one budget line item to this, to use it this, for this app. Because of COVID-19, we didn't go to FASD, we didn't go to FDIC. So I think we, those two travel and seminars that we didn't go to, we can use that money for, you know, a safety app, is what I'm looking for. Because also on there, we're going to use it for the fire prevention, because contractors right now, to go to the website, it's a little clunky to go and look exactly where to go do, to apply for an inspection, whether it's hood inspection, or it's an LPG inspection, whatever it is. With this app, it just, it's a lot easier. It's a lot, it's a lot more user-friendly.
Anybody have any questions about it?
Yes, I've already asked you this question. How are you going to get the people to realize they can get this app? Well, you answered it to me, but I'd like you to say it again.
What our, what our plan is, is a marketing strategy. A, it's going to be on our website. B, it's going to be pushed out on our Facebook. C, anytime we go to any event, whether it's, hopefully, we can start having events, whether it's to celebrate Benita, 4th of July, we will push it out there. We also have, as you know, most of you have went through Leadership Benita, went through Leadership Benita, and we have a Fire Expo here at the Fire Department. So anytime we go and talk to any civic group or whatever, we would push that out. Hey, look, here's our app, let's download it. Whether we go to a homeowners association in Hunter's Ridge, or Benita National, San Remo, or anybody's. So we always would push it out that way. So that's one of our marketing strategies. The other is, is, as I explained to you, Vice Chairman, is, my thought is, with our production, we can put that across the bottom as a crawler for their first five or six or eight, you know, meetings that we have it available. My hope and goal is to have it ready by October 1. I don't see why it shouldn't be, but for the height of hurricanes...
A question that I've had all along with it, I think it's a great idea. A concern, or a question I have, is, obviously, everybody that works here, everybody involved in the department's going to, is going to load this app on their phone. Maybe we could work with the chamber. But my question is, are we going to notify all the homeowners associations and, you know, we need to get it out there amongst, so that the average citizen in Benita has it on their phone? Because, I mean, we're all going to have it, because we're involved in this stuff day to day. But my concern is, or not a concern, but I just think that we, if, to make this thing be functional, like I think we're looking to do, we're going to have to do a really hard push when we first do it, to have everybody put it on their phone. I think that that part of it is going to be, the early part of it is going to be a little bit challenging.
And I think, you know, some of the other plans started interrupting, sir. But the other plan is, you know, we have 350-plus CERT members at each of these communities, where I know Citrus Park has a large contingent of CERT members, Pelican Landy, San Remo, Benita National...
You know, we have like 40,000-plus people that live in town, and, go ahead, Commissioner Murphy.
We could actually use a marketing company that can get it out to the newspapers and get it out to TV spots in the cities.
No, who does that?
I know of one, but I don't want to mention it on...
No, okay. I'm just saying that this company that does this doesn't do any of that marketing...
No, no, and...
No, okay.
They don't. But it would be on any, whether it's an Android, whether it's a Google Play, or the App Store, the Apple Store, it's going to be on there too. So if somebody looked up Benita Springs on an app, boom, it's going to come up there.
Well, 99 out of 100 people aren't going to look, aren't going to do that. So my point is, is as a department, if we do this, in order to make it work, and, I mean, it's very reasonable. I mean, the cost factor isn't, isn't even an issue, really. But the concern is that it doesn't do any good to have an app that only we're using or only a handful of people. So I think the marketing side of that, to get it out to as many people as possible, and like I said, maybe the chamber could help.
Yeah, agreed. We'll look at all the marketing strategies. Like I said, our plan is to push it out hard and, hard and keep pushing out, not just a one-month marketing...
No, exactly. You know, and...
Nicole has connections everywhere.
Well, and that's, that's the point. I mean, I'm sure Nicole's going to be busy and whoever else are going to, I mean, that's up to you, who does that. But I think that it would be disappointing to do this and only have 400 or 500 people on, you know, I'd like to see a few thousand people on it. And then I'd feel that, you know, it could expand from there. But if we only had a few hundred people, it's going to be nice to have, but it's not going to serve the purpose that I think we all want it to serve.
Chief, do you think Laura Taylor from the city could help out?
I think we'll tap everybody from the chamber, Tiffany at the chamber, Laura at the city. I think I know who Commissioner Murphy has in mind with a marketing firm. We can pick that person's brain and/or the actual chamber to let us go one or two ways. Like I said, even with BTV and Channel 98, to put something on that as a rolling ad in there. So, and again, anytime I go out and talk, whether it's, I've been out to Benita National, I suspect now hurricane season's coming around, we'll be doing more HOAs, and we'll be putting it out on those, and then hopefully those...
And this app is perfect for that.
Yeah.
It's only perfect if people have it downloaded on their phone, and I think that's the...
I know in the past, Chief Scott's, Chief Scott's, in his past role, he went out and did talks with AEDs. Again, part of the app is a CPR function on there. You know, I know that we're going to have the fire marshal pushing it out to all the businesses out there, so if they need to do, schedule their inspection, this is where you go. So not only are we going to have Benita Springs residents, we're going to have Benita Springs actual owners, business owners.
Now, are you the actually, the one that's going to be doing the teaching or training, whatever?
I won't be doing the training. We have a company that's going to make it, and then either myself, Chief Scott, someone of some authority is going to push out the alerts, because we just don't want, we don't want to get somebody that is, gets immune to an alert coming out. The nays look at it, because it's just, hey, the grass is green today in Benita Springs. We don't want to push those apps out. We want it to, we want those notifications to be something special, so when you get an alert from the Benita Springs Fire Department, it's something significant. So myself, the chief, one of the three deputy chiefs, along with Nicole, will push those out. But as far as the training and doing, it's pretty much self-explanatory, and it says on there, like, here's fire prevention forums, and it says where to go to. So it is pretty much self-explanatory.
Okay, thank you. Have you set a goal for a number of, how many people you'd like to have, like, in the first three months?
We have not. I was going to talk to this company and ask them, what is the typical? When I talked to the city of Naples, they had only had it for like a couple of weeks, so he couldn't give me any definitive numbers.
Chairman, excuse me, Chairman, just so you know, I'm, I'm working on a show right now with Nicole on hurricanes, because it's hurricane season, and we can put a, I can add to it, and we could put a whole thing about this app and the information.
I mean, I don't want to beat it to death, but it, I don't want to be sitting here next year when the, when the maintenance fee cost comes up, and we only have 300 or 400 people on it, then we have to look, is this worth it?
Gotcha.
Okay? And whereas if, you know, we get several thousand, and I think once it starts, it'll grow, but I'd like, I think we'd all probably like to see it start off with a fair number in the very beginning, not just, you know...
Well, we'll do it. Like I said, we're going to post it everywhere, from our website to Facebook, to all that. Okay. We're going to do a large marketing campaign.
Anybody else have any discussion, any more discussion on this?
I take them...
Yeah, we need a motion to accept this.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item, policy number 884, reserve limits. I need a motion to approve that. I don't believe we have to talk about that. That's pretty much...
Yeah, we talked about that to board at the budget rating workshop.
We mentioned that there are seven or eight-year, or seven or eight percent drop in property values.
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
That's the future capital funding.
That's the future, yeah.
This was just the policy for the reserve limits. You need a motion for that?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then policy number 885, which is the future capital funding. If we just want to maybe do a quick recap of that, so, just for the record.
At the, at the meeting, we talked about the seven-year or eight-year. I'd propose that we go with the seven, seven percent, rather.
Seven percent, yes. That's for the state reduction in reserve future, so we'll go with the seven?
Yeah, so if, if property values drop by seven percent, this activates.
Correct. If it drops below seven, we'll pull from the stabilization fund, and then if we still need more, we'll pull strategically from the other capital improvement office, equipment and machinery and vehicles, depending on where our priority is for the future capital. If we need, if we know we need a fire truck in the next year or two, obviously, that will be the last one we pull from, whereas the capital...
Well, if we can go, if we can go long enough without having a seven percent drop in values, I'm hoping there'll, there'll be enough money in that that we could leave all the other reserves alone and only use that.
Correct.
I mean, that, you know, that's basically, I would think that would be the goal, is that fund would be set up for, you know, for the apocalypse, really, you know, when something got really ugly, like in '08.
When it went down 15%.
Yeah, so, you know, hopefully, we've got, you know, a couple of years to build it up to the point where that should be the first place we go, and then not touch any of the other money that we have set up.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we do this at a seven percent of property value drop. It activates the stabilization fund.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman, I think we skipped over to future capital funding, policy number 885. The one we just voted on with the 78 is the one that's going to be determined at a later date.
I thought we just did that, future capital funding. That's the one we just voted on. No? Didn't we?
No, we voted on the reduction of reserves, as we talked about, to seven percent of the property values. That's the one that we don't have a policy number yet, because...
I read it, 885, I just, I just read the wrong...
Yeah.
So we approved that?
We approved that one, yeah. Correct.
The, the other one is the one we just had, yeah. I did it in the right order, I just had the wrong name on it. Policy number to be determined, reduction of reserves and future capital planning, you need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then Station 24 Doors, the Cypress Act access, we need a, we need a motion to approve that contract.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Chief, do it.
Okay. I just want to thank, thank you, the commission, for those three policies that you approved. I mean, that's going to help us, set us up for the future, and it helps us, you know, move some stuff around that we need to move around. Few different things I have on my list. If you remember, probably, probably six, eight months ago, we had an issue with A-triple foam. It's been about a year since we, it came to our knowledge about A-triple foam, having carcinogens in it. Because of us being a training site, we had to do some, I won't call it mitigation. They came out, the state tested us. We had two sites that were above the, above the limits. So what we did is we hired, it's called Montrose Environmental. They came out, retested the areas, and now the test areas are lower than what's permissible. So we have now solicited a letter to the Florida DOT, DEP, I'm sorry, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, to let us go. So we shouldn't have to do any more monitoring. We should be free and clear of them. So let's knock on wood, and hopefully, they allowed it. When I originally spoke to them, I made the comment, what happens if our levels are below the permissible amounts? They said, well, we'll take, we'll look at that when it comes out. And I'm like, so, so I'll let you know, I'll keep you informed. As of right now, as far as the company that we hired to mitigate it, they're, they're saying we're free and clear.
Good.
Getting back to Commissioner Murphy's question, COVID-19, as we've known, as we've heard in the last couple of days, the cases are spiking again. We had 15,000-plus in one day. Currently, right now, the state of Florida has 282,000 cases. Of those, there's 4,200 deaths. And these are round numbers, I mean. So, Cawyer County currently today has 6,369 cases and 94 deaths. Lee County has 10,153 cases with 188 deaths. Benita Springs, in the two ZIP codes that we covered, the 34135 and 34134, we have 705 cases in Benita Springs.
I'll meet that.
It doesn't specify how many deaths in Benita.
Do they have hospitalizations?
Hospitalizations right now in the two counties, with Lee County being mostly Lee Memorial, and let's use, Cawyer County with mostly being Naples Community Hospital with physicians regional, we have a total of 411 beds available.
How many actual patients?
They didn't say how many were hospitalized.
How many recoveries?
I didn't do the recovery.
Okay, I was just curious.
But I will say, you know, because of our due diligence here at the Fire Department, we really haven't wavered since day one. Since this came out, we started talking about what we're doing on calls, whether it's mask, gown, eye protection and gloves, or just mask, eye protection and gloves. We have two different protocols that we use. With that, and our own due diligence throughout the office, we have not had any lying person go out with tests positive for COVID.
How are we on our PPE?
Yeah, that's my next question.
We are still good on PPE. We have over 800 N95 masks, I think 1,000-plus of the surgical masks, gowns, and we've issued every personnel their own eye protection. We did that right away. And if, you know, times got really bad, if, when it first came out, you seen the guys with the canister mask, we have the canister mask assigned to everybody also.
Do you still have access to masks and stuff?
Yes.
If we need more?
Yes.
Okay.
The county still has some. If you notice, the black masks that are provided for the public, if they needed it to come into this meeting. We originally bought some, and then those were provided to us by the county for our personnel.
Thank you.
So any questions on the COVID? I'm sorry, I'll get that to you.
No, I was just curious, Greg.
Okay. The other thing I have is, just for informational purposes, is the city hall's being redone. I guess they're redoing the inside, doing some renovations, whether it's AC, whatever they're doing. So they need a place to have a meeting, so we've agreed to let them use our meeting space on, starting July 15.
How much run? Just kidding.
So, starting July 15, it's going to be the first and third Wednesdays. So, so just so you know, so you tune in one day, and it's like, hey, you're sitting in my chair.
How long, how long is that going to last?
They figure it's going to go till about the first of the year. That's what their plan is right now. Now, depending on COVID, depending on what goes on, their plan is right now till through December, to be back in there for January.
Now, for the evening meetings, do we have to have staff here for that?
No.
Okay.
Chief, I would suggest that they should have to pay for this room in the, for disinfecting after it's been used.
They have their own disinfectant they will bring. They have, we actually loaned them one of our aerosolized machines, so they use that, and they have, they have the same stuff that we have.
I'm all for them being here as long as they're paying for the expense of keeping it sanitized.
Yeah. And in my, two other things, two other issues. As we know, we had the 4th of July here, went off without a hitch, other than some small traffic problems being backed up when they shut it down. Other than that, staff said that it went off without a hitch, no edge, no issues, no injuries. And my last one is, is just so you, so the commissioners know, we're in the middle of doing our department-wide physicals for everybody. And I have nothing else.
Thank you. Assistant Chief Scott?
Yes, sir.
Madden's not here, okay. And we've got the reports from Deputy Chief Broden and Fire Marshal Washburn in our packet. If anybody has any questions on those, nice job. And now, I have a card here from Alex Grant, who'd like to get up and speak. If you would just, if you'd stay right there, and somebody's going to bring you a portable microphone.
Yeah, he can use this.
Well, we need it for the record. Your voice doesn't pick up. Who has the, who has the...
He has it right there, he was using it. His wasn't working.
Commissioner Materials, actual mic, I think, went out, so we used that. You can just hold it. You can just hold it. can just hold it, you can just hold it.
Can you hear me, or do I need to?
Okay.
We can hear you.
I just thought I'd tell you, this is for your information, but what I did, based upon my request last month, I just did a very brief analysis of the starting pension, starting pension for the first year of the certified firefighters that retired, according to the information I had, 12 of them, 12 of the retired, started at a retirement for the first year of 72,000, six of them started at a retirement of 84,000 a year, this is per year, six started at the start of retirement at 60,000 a year, four started at a retirement of 48,000 a year, four started at a retirement of 42,000 a year, three started at a retirement of 96,000 a year, three started a retirement of 36,000 a year, two started a retirement of 108,000 a year, two started a retirement of 102,000 a year, two started at a retirement of 30,000 a year.
Can I ask, can I ask you a question where you're going with this?
Well, I'm just giving you this information.
Well, I understand that, but it doesn't have, that's not district business, that's pension business, there's people that don't work here, and this public input is for employees.
Well, anyway, this is just for your own benefit.
Well, we already know all of this, but it doesn't, it's not costing the district that money, I, I think you're trying to give the impression that the district is paying that, and it's the, excuse me, and it's the pension fund.
Right.
So, that, all that comes out of a pension that we've paid into for those people for 30 years.
Well, I just thought I'd tell you for your.
Well, are you going somewhere with that at the end?
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to give you information.
Well, thank you.
One would I, you know, for your own information.
Well, we, we are very well aware of that, so, thank you.
Okay, well, anyway, I, I thought I'd be helpful.
Thank you.
Another thing I thought I'd be helpful for, there's an article in Chemical Engineering News about protective gear could expose firefighters to this PFAS, and if you need a copy of that, I can make sure.
I believe we have that.
If you.
Am I correct?
Yes, we've seen.
We have it, fine.
No, we, we know all about it, right.
Okay, you know about it, I think that's University of Notre Dame, you have that?
Yes, that's why we pay these guys the big bucks.
Okay, all right, well, anyway, you can unhook me.
Seeing no further comment, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, everybody.
We didn't vote on it.